Panel eight and you should be going to YouTube.
Okay, well, good evening. I would like to call this meeting of the Narragansett Regional School District's School Committee to order. Just making some notes as to who's here, so bear with me a moment. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and Mrs. Mattson, I believe you have our flag to hold, so we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For which it stands, one nation, under God.
I was muted, sorry.
Okay, just trying to pull up our YouTube. And how do I turn the volume down? Pardon my technical things, I'm just getting the YouTube feed up, but I need to turn the volume off. So anyway, I would like to announce that this meeting is being livestreamed and recorded and being pushed out to the the community cable stations by Templeton Community TV. And as always, we thank them for our partnership that you have with us to make that happen. We truly appreciate it. And I'm just making sure I have everybody's name down so I can announce who is on the screen. Thank you. Okay, so. Tonight for the school committee, we have Mr. Marx, Mrs. Mattson, Mrs. Robichaud, Mrs. Chartier, Mrs. Kojal, and myself, Mrs. Hughes. I'm sure that Mr. Mason and Mrs. Trifolo will be joining us shortly. Dr. Kazivan, Superintendent of Schools, Ms. Kalis, our Assistant Superintendent, and Emery Geister, our Business Manager, as well as Mrs. Varney, our wonderful Executive Admin Assistant who keeps us in line. We also have on the screen with us tonight Abby Bennett and Callie Whedle, both seniors in high school, that will give us our student report when we get to their section. So, welcome, everybody, and welcome to our meeting. Okay, so the first thing I need will be the approval of the minutes from November 12, 2020. Everyone should have received those, and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes when someone is ready.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion by Mrs. Kojal, and I have a second by Mrs. Mattson. Anyone have any questions or comments on those minutes? Okay, seeing none, we'll take a vote. We'll do roll call. So if the school committee could unmute themselves. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Abstain.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so it was five yeses, so they are approved with Mrs. Robichaud abstaining. The next set of minutes we have to approve are from the meeting on November 17. When someone's ready, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 17, 2020.
So moved.
And I have a motion by Mrs. Was that Mrs. Kojal?
Robichaud.
But Mrs. Robichaud, sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mrs. Mattson. I moved away from the screen, so I couldn't see who was speaking, so. Okay, does anyone have any questions or comments on the meeting minutes from November 17? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote. Mr. Marx? Mr. Marx? We'll come back to him, Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes, sorry, too many screens open.
Nope, that's okay. And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so those were approved unanimously. Next on our agenda are the bills and payroll. I would take a recommendation to accept the bills and payroll warrants as they were presented. I have a motion by Mrs. Kojal. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from, I believe, Mrs. Mattson? Any questions or comments on those of those of payroll? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Marx?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Chartier?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous. Next up, we'll have our student representatives make a report out. We got to be introduced to our to the representatives on the Student Advisor Committee at our last meeting, and tonight we have Abby Bennett and Callie Whedle here to give the committee a report and a presentation and share with us whatever they'd like. So I am going to mute myself and turn it over to Abby and Callie to do the report out. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for inviting us here tonight. As was mentioned earlier, my name is Abby Bennett, and I'm a senior up in the high school. I'm very involved in like the band and theater program, so I can share my side from that. So the marching band has been able to do practices so long as the school is, you know, hybrid still, but we do switch to online when we are, you know, full remote. Recently, we just recorded a bunch of holiday songs, so those you can find on Facebook. So if, you know, we did a social distance performance, a bunch of like Christmas carols and things like that. And then for theater, we were planning to do an online reading of a Christmas carol. Unfortunately, we had to switch to more of a like an individual student type deal. So we're going to be switching to make students recording Christmas poems or stories. So you can be on the lookout for those. Also, just to share about what's going on as a full remote student. So I've been full remote all year. I would like to say that our teachers are doing a really fabulous job of having a synchronous learning environment. This year, it is really hard to manage both, you know, classwork and homework, because it's like, it's not the same learning experience as you would get, but our teachers are doing a really good job. So we've had a, it's been pretty successful on that count. We had a game night tonight as part of our Warrior Learning Warrior Leadership Class. And so that was, Callie and I actually got to run that. So I don't know, Callie, you want to talk a little bit about that?
I can talk about. Hi, I'm Callie. I'm also a senior. So as we mentioned, we have a game night or afternoon. And after all, we had participation from multiple students, and everyone seemed to enjoy it. We had cameras on from everybody in communication, which was really nice to be, because we get to see kids in class a lot, the most of the school teams. So that was really nice to see people and have people say that they enjoyed it, and they will come back and do it again. And as Abby mentioned, she's a full remote student. I'm a hybrid student, so my learning has been a little different this year. I do agree with her. The teachers are doing a fabulous job trying to manage the work they give us versus the work we do in school. But I know a lot of students who are hybrid and even full remote have trouble with differentiating what is school time and what is home time, because you learn in the environment every single day, and you don't see anything different. I don't know if that's something that can be changed, because you can't be in school, but I know a lot of kids are struggling with that.
Another point we'd like to make is that with our game night that Callie had mentioned, you know, we had a good amount of participation. It was a small group, but, you know, we had cameras on, and the kids were really happy to be there. And we really think it would help to boost school spirit if we brought back the club aspect. Obviously, it wouldn't be the same as like the after-school setting, but I feel like meeting kids or even, you know, working with teachers and like out-of-the-classroom experience really helps to separate like the the stress almost of school to having more of a positive experience. So that could help with school spirit, you know, participation, you know, getting those cameras on, and really allowing kids to find their niche in the school.
Great. Thank you, Abby and Callie, for sharing a little bit about your day and letting us know what's going on in the district. And also, thank you for the input about, you know, the clubs and whatnot. I know that it's on on the radar to try and make that happen. And I'm sure that Dr. Kazivan, when when we, when he speaks in just a few minutes, anyway, you know, he could talk a little bit about maybe during our COVID update, you know, how that's impacted clubs' activities. I know we'll do a sports update, et cetera, because I think you're right that it is nice when we have more social settings for the students to connect, because, you know, knowing that it's hard for the the students to see you guys to see each other, because we're trying to isolate and and not get too close, that that might be a really nice outlet to make some of that happen. So thank you for that feedback. Does anyone else on the committee have any questions or comments for Callie or Abby? Nope, seeing none. Thank you so much for your report. As you know, you're welcome to spend the rest of the meeting with us and participate. If you do have homework or anything else that you have commitments for, you know, obviously, we understand that if you'll need to drop off at any point. So thank you for for your reports. I did want to announce that-
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to say that certainly I wouldn't, I wouldn't wish staying for the whole school committee on any person, especially a student, but they may want to just hang in there until the COVID report out. Just just so that maybe you could report back to your, you know, to your constituency, ladies. So just if you can, I understand, but that might be, it might be worth it. We'll see.
Thank you. I'll do my best to stay, but I will have to leave around six, so thank you.
Great. Little foreshadowing there, perhaps. I did want to announce that Mr. Mason has joined the call. I think it was about 5:05, so welcome, Mr. Mason. Next up on our report is the on our agenda is public input. I checked early, and I will just look to Mrs. Varney and make sure that nothing did come in via email in the last few moments, because we didn't have any just prior to meeting time.
Check quickly.
Double check that.
There has been none.
Okay, and as always, we'll keep an eye on the YouTube chat stream, and if anything comes up that we're able to address, we'll certainly mention the comment and where it comes from and try to answer it, or at least make people aware of the comments that are coming, and we'll do our best to do that. We would typically go to a report from the NDEA, but I don't see an NDEA rep with us this evening, so we'll skip over that. And next up are two items that we can probably take together, which is an FY21 budget status and an FY22 budget status. We met on Monday as a school committee to kick off our FY22. So we kind of did this on Monday's meeting, but we'll give the short, very short encapsulated version. State doesn't have a budget yet. The governor has has set some things for approval. So we're waiting on those things to be finalized. FY22, we're waiting for that to kick off at the state level. But on Monday, we did meet, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Kazivan and Ms. Geister for just a minute if they want to give an update on where we, a quick update on what we did on Monday and and go from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just simply sum it up is that we, what we detailed is really the expenses or what we know to be the expenses. We are waiting on some crucial information. One is the preliminary school choice report in terms of differential. But we, you know, we've, we, again, we had enough information to speak about where where we see some of our our expenses.
Great, thank you. So if anyone wants more detail into that FY22 and what what we talked about, you can go out and find the video for Monday's meeting out on the TCTV YouTube channel, and you can view it there or through their Facebook channel as well. Next up, we have the Business Managers Report, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Geister to see if there's anything that we need to be made aware of, and then take any questions if anyone has with the information that she's provided to us.
Hi, the big, the big thing is, is the December 30 deadline for the Corona Relief Grants. We have a couple of them. I've been spending a lot of time making sure that that money is being spent down, and we have everything in place that we need to to close those out. Or maybe they'll offer more money that we can extend them and add other things. But that's, that's really the big thing on the grants. Once those grants end, we have, they're covering a lot of salaries for substitutes for some of our staff that's out due to Corona. Those salaries will then go into the general fund if we don't get another grant or an extension on some of those monies. So once that happens, the January, February reporting, you probably will see a significant difference in the balance on the general fund when you look at the reports each month. But other than that, the general fund, it's going really well. We haven't had to put a freeze on the budget, which is a first in a few years. So I think that the staff is probably pretty happy that the things that they need are being funded. One thing I want to draw your attention to is on the revolving accounts. We have a Phillipsden Memorial Donation Account on our books, and I would like to recommend that you consider combining that donation account with the Templeton Elementary one that's on our books and moving the $7,300 that's in the Phillipsden one to the Templeton one.
Okay, do we, do we want to wait until we finalize all of the the turnover of the building back to the town before we do that?
Sure.
Okay, I think that would be best. Let's get through that process, and then we'll figure out the disposition. But I, I agree, it makes sense that we should take that step. Anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Geister? I had just one quick question as I was looking through the the line items of where we are. Are there any expenses that we have put into the general fund that you think we may be able to apply to a grant? Or have you really been able to isolate those things based upon the information we have so far?
Everything that's related to COVID has been put in the grants, and we've been very fortunate to work with the Town of Templeton, that they've allowed us to use their FEMA reimbursement money. So the stuff that hasn't gone in the grant, we've been able to submit for reimbursement through the Town of Templeton, because they submitted it through FEMA. So we're pretty covered, like all of the grant monies and the FEMA monies that can take expenses, they've all been pushed towards that. Anything that comes up, obviously, after December 30th will be from the general fund, but right now, we're in really good shape.
Great. Okay, does anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, I don't see anybody. Thank you for putting that information together and making us aware of of the the things that you have. And I know we'll, we'll have more continued, more in-depth conversations as we get past the halfway mark of the year, so thank you. Next up are our COVID-19 updates. I will turn it over to Dr. Kazivan and let him give us those, that information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll start off, quite frankly, that because this will all, everything really just ties in together. So I want to obviously state the obvious that we've, we've gone for full remote, obviously, at the middle and high school. And as my letter vaguely stated, which, you know, it has to be that way, is that there were a number of either positives or close contacts. And and our philosophical stand on this, it might be different than other districts, but quite frankly, when we get over a certain number, you know, what we're looking at is potential, right, spread. So although a contact of a contact is quarantined, there's no, there's no need to go any further. So so a contact of a contact is not something that we would trace out without getting all, you know, without getting too specific. So, but the minute maybe one of those contacts do, you know, become positive, then then you've, then you've waited a longer period of time, and now you've got more contacts anyway. So the issue is that we've, we've run into this a couple times, and we've, we've learned that if we get out as healthy as we possibly can, that it's benefited us. And so of those, all the, of all the folks we're waiting back for testing in terms of the contacts, many, many of them have come back negative, which we felt was was going to happen. So when people ask me, well, gee, why? And we talk about one positive. So as my letter stated, that, you know, one positive, you know, came close, I believe, I think it was around 70 contacts. How is that possible is a is a great question. And a lot of that has to do with buses, okay, and busing. Now, again, philosophically, we think differently about this, because technically, we wouldn't necessarily need to contact folks, because we know that the buses are sitting at, you know, X amount of feet apart, and we know that they're not, you know, when they pass, it's not 15 feet, windows are open, masks are on. But we've, again, we've, we've been very, we've been very cautious when these things start to happen, and it's benefited us. So I kind of set the stage to that to kind of go into the other, the other pieces of, of, okay, I just heard, I believe it was Abby, talking about the band. And they were, because we were full remote, forced to make other plans. And I think that what we need to get used to is that, once we kind of pass, you know, once we get through the the period of time where either those contacts are positive or people have tested, which they've been, they've been excellent to do that, we are, we're sitting, we're sitting in remote with, thankfully, not of, not a case of of spread. So my point to Abby and to the, you know, there's a point where I'm going to say, which I have for basketball, I've said, we know that none of the contacts are positives were associated with the team, okay? So after we were clear to that, actually, it was when I take that back, was a contact of a contact. But once we were, we were confident everybody was was good to go, we, of course, allowed practice to go, to go back to practicing, become basketball, go back to practicing, because we felt that it was, you know, safe, safe to do so, and plus, we're remote. So I would say to Abby, for example, like if that's a thing, you know, as we move forward, we'll, let's talk about how we can bring them back. The other part to that is that the clubs in virtue, we've talked a lot about clubs. And we think that, again, you don't know what you don't know. So when we started this this whole endeavor, we weren't sure, we were trying to get school going, quite frankly, never mind clubs and anything else. But I, I think there's an opportunity, quite frankly, not to open up the full array of clubs, but there's certainly some clubs out there that I think they would not, would benefit exactly what, you know, what the, what the young ladies were talking about earlier, is that it's a great way to connect other than school. I love the, I think, Callie, it was a little garbled, but I think home versus school time. It all blurs into one. We, staff are feeling that. Of course, our students are feeling that. So we do need to delineate, and we're trying to figure that out. It's harder when we're remote. It's harder for the kids who are full remote, but we're trying to, we're trying to work on that. So I would, I would, moving forward, we are going to look at some of the clubs that would make sense to open up and and kind of be, you know, kind of be on the lookout for that. So I guess if those are your answers, ladies, Callie and Abby, I guess you can go now, right? So, but the other parts is that, so we talked about the full remote piece and why. We've actually had some good news come up, and, you know, anytime we get free things, it's it's a good day, quite frankly. So we were notified, I don't know, a couple weeks ago, I think Emery can correct me, but we were notified kind of en masse that that there were masks available, free masks for for students. And every district was offered these masks, and we, if you signed up, they gave you a general pickup point. And our pickup point was Worcester, so Rick Moulton and Emery went out and picked up, you know, close to 3,000 masks for free, and we gladly took them, because who knows, you know, what the future holds. I think the other part that we're, I'm pretty excited about is that on one of our DESI, pardon me, Commissioner meetings, the Commissioner mentioned something about air purifiers, and it caught my, it caught my ear. And so they gave a contact information. Long story short, I contacted the Commissioner's office, explained to them that, you know, we're working hard to get our HVAC system up and running, you know, just fine tuned, and but I, what about these air purifiers? And so they asked how many classrooms we had at the middle and high school, give or take, and I said 75. And they, I think they should have been here today, but they, they are sending 75 free new air purifiers. So, you know, compliments of the Commissioner and Department of, Department of Ed. So, you know, we're, we're trying to, we're utilizing as many different resources as we can to, again, to keep moving forward. Emery talked about the grants and how we were doing there. I think, as you know now, we, we ring these grants out pretty tight. We look for every dime, and anything that's free, we're all over. So we'll, we'll keep an eye out. So those were two things, I think, the two pieces of of good news. The other, and I think that I have mentioned this before, but we, you know, we applied for what's called the BinXNow Grant, which is a rapid, it's the rapid COVID test. And I'm actually going to read this off, but the rapid antigen test performs best when persons are tested early stages, either student or or staff. And that would be maybe if someone was at the school and they were symptomatic, and they want, we wanted to get a gauge quickly to maybe their status. And so the state put that out as well, and we applied, and I think I had mentioned this, and we didn't get any information. To come to find out, they missed us. So we, they missed our application or whatever the case may be. So we're actually involved with that now. And we've, we've gone through the first two rounds of that, and of course, our nursing staff, obviously, the nursing staff are a part of that, and they are, you know, they're, they're going through trainings. And I think that one of the things this might turn into ultimately is that we're, if we're testing, if someday we become more of a testing center, or we are, we are doing testing of every child or student like some of the more affluent districts out east, which, again, costs tremendous amount of money. But that being said, you need to have people who are trained to know how to, to administer a rapid test. And so we're going to be on the front line of that. Of course, with that comes training on how to do, which we've had a lot of, but case tracing, and all of that goes with that. So one of the things that, and again, I think this would be an appropriate time, but to talk about, but according to the contract, you know, it's before February 1, superintendent can recommend and waive the wait period of a stipended position, okay, in terms of funds or whatever the case is as well. And what I want to do is create a stipended position, which, again, we'll, we will absolutely follow the procedure, you know, posting, et cetera. Although I will say, it's fairly tunneled and to our, our ends, because, you know, you have to have, obviously, a certain skill set and ability to to administer these tests. But, you know, I would like the committee to consider, obviously, this this stipended position for hopefully just this year, quite frankly, but it may be beyond, because I don't think that even with the vaccine that will be out of the woods yet. There is an amount that's tied to that, and we're working with that now. But that will, that will be applied through the FEMA grant, because it applies in terms of testing. So it really wouldn't cost the district anything, at least this year. And I realize that it's mid-year, but it's a situation where they're going to have to put in a lot of extra time, more than they do anyway. All of our educators do, all of our staff do, there's no doubt. But this is more focused. They're going to have to be part of a training cohort. They're going, they're going to have to do a lot more outside of what they normally do anyway. And I thought this would be a good opportunity to, again, by following the contract, but to utilize what is, you know, what's available to, you know, to me, and of course, the school committee, given these situations, and the importance of Narragansett being an active part of this, of this program. So I think I'll pause, because I certainly put a bunch of information out there for any questions or comments or or- Um, and for any questions or comments or, or whatnot.
Anyone have any questions or comments? Mrs. Mattson?
I do. You said that it's a, a one-year stipendant position applied through the FEMA grant, but you didn't really say what the position was unless I missed it.
I think that, you know, quite frankly, it would be the, I would probably call it rapid COVID test, um, stipend position, uh, because that's literally what it's, uh, what it's about. Um, I won't give it the name of BinX Now because that's actually the company. Uh, but, uh, because I, what we, what we understand is that although BinX Now or the, that's the company right now that has these rapid tests. That might change, um, depending on, um, what the state wants to do moving forward. And I, I, so I, I think that that's, that would be the name. Of course I would write this, we would of course make this, um, more official. There would be of course, you know, I'd, we'd have to post it, there'd be a name. But we would just really, we, we wouldn't be playing around with it too much. It'd be the rapid COVID test and, um, case tracing stipend.
Do you, um, are you looking for us to look at potentially approving this tonight? Or, um, can you provide us, you know, more descriptions so that we have a chance to review it first?
Right. So what I wanted to do is put it on the radar officially because February will come quick, believe it or not. Um, and, um, I will send out the, the, the volumes of information. Quite frankly, it's, it's quite a bit. So I'll, I'll send out the introductory piece of it and what we've done so far. Um, and what I'd like to do is whatever our next actual meeting is that we finalize it within the timeframe. Um, again, in terms of cost to the district, it, it, we would be able to apply it to the, um, the FEMA slash FEMA grant, uh, that we have all, you know, that we've been working with. Um, but I, I have to tell you that only two districts in our area, um, were approved or maybe applied. I don't, they don't get into that. So, um, we're really kind of on the, you know, on the front line of this, which is good. Cause I, I'd like to have as much experience with this moving forward. Um, because I think that puts us in a better position and it actually can, you know, obviously it gives a service to our kids and to our, um, staff.
Okay. Great. So we'll be on the lookout for that and we'll be sure to put that on the agenda for our next meeting to give approval for the creation of that position so that you can actually, uh, implement it and get that posted and do whatever you need to.
Thank you.
Any other questions, um, on anything so far? Because we do have a, a question on YouTube, but I'll take anything from the committee first. Okay. So we have a question on our YouTube feed from Paul Dowsett. And I apologize if I do set, okay, thank you. Um, will you be getting purifiers for the elementary school? Or is it for the high school, middle school only?
Only for the middle school, high school only. Um, TES is an air purifier, quite frankly. Um, you know, in terms of state of the art, um, ventilation, HVAC, et cetera. It's, um, Merbalevins, the whole, you know, everything you've read about. Um, our elementary school, uh, is absolutely, uh, is, is prepared or is best prepared as you could possibly be in terms of a building. Um, so the air purifiers, quite frankly, um, will assist. We, we have good airflow at the middle and high school. We have outside air, we have ventilation, we have, um, I mean, we have flow, we have exhaust, we have all of those things. We've worked quite, quite hard at that. But, um, the air purifiers will certainly, um, assist within, you know, in the real cold, cold days where, um, that the, uh, that the, the actuators or the vents won't, won't operate because it'll be so cold outside and you don't want to, of course, have 20 blow, you know, 20 blow air coming into the, um, into your room. So, um, it'll just be for the middle and high school.
Thank you for, uh, answering that. Um, he did respond awesome, thought that this was the case. Thanks for all the work you do. So pass that along as well. And thank you for the question. That was very good. Um, a good question to clarify where those purifiers would be used. Um, I do want to just let everybody know, Mrs. Trifilo has joined us. I believe it was 5:28, um, where she joined us. So welcome, Mrs. Trifilo. Um, any other, uh, questions from the committee about any COVID related items? Um, I, I think you, you mentioned briefly sports. Um, do we, do we have any, have we heard any further direction? I know they, they kind of come out with these big announcements. I just don't know if there's any, any information about sports that has come out that you'd like to share with us?
Sure. And just before that, I just want, this is another important, great thing. Uh, and, uh, I'm sorry to have so much good news. Uh, but, um, you know, we talked a little while ago, a couple, a couple of weeks ago, that, uh, the administrative team had to answer a 75 question, um, survey about our student time and learning. It was, it, it took three hours and it's, it's a, it's, it's, it is the longest, um, survey and most in-depth survey that we've ever, I've ever done in terms of, um, work, you know, that we've done here for the educational portion of things. But, um, we, we, we received simply, we received our letter and after reviewing all the volumes of information that we sent them, that we are quote unquote cleared, which means that we have hit, um, the number that the state, um, is looking to, um, well, I, I think they're trying to put into of course, uh, regulation, but, um, the average of 35 hours, if you are in fact in the hybrid and we, we hit that mark. Um, I will say that I know that some people like, well, you know, that's like, that, that is a big deal. Um, there's a, there's a lot of districts that are trying to figure out how to do that. Um, and they, they have a, a heck of a lot more resources than we have, quite frankly, um, across the state. Um, and I think that's a, it's a credit, um, to Kate, um, and her, you know, and her admin team who really worked hard at looking at the timing of the stuff. But our staff worked, have worked diligently right from the very beginning to create, um, the best opportunity for our students. So I, I think that that's important that we've, you know, we've passed at least the first test. Um, uh, I'm sure there are more to come. Uh, but we've, uh, we did, we did, uh, clear that and we, we were cleared. That's literally what it says. I would have passed, but cleared. Um, in terms of sports, sports have been a big deal. Uh, it's a big, a, a huge conversation. Um, nothing more has changed. The regulations are, pardon me, the, um, um, you know, the guidelines are, have been out, um, you know, and basketball is, and hockey, both, uh, are indoor sports, obviously. The, the real big concern that people had, uh, that, that folks have had of what, what about fans? Um, and I will say that the pod that we're in, the mid-watch, the whole mid-watch actually, but the pod that we're in, and we do a lot of talking between ADs, principals and, uh, superintendents, is that we have, have said from the, there will not be any fans in any of those games, period. Um, and that is from the, that's actually from the mid-watch down. So I think that's the biggest message to put out there. Right now, people are practicing. Um, next Wednesday, we will go on a break, meaning the entire pod, the, I believe, I think the entire state actually, quite frankly, but they will go on a one or two week break. There will be nothing, no practices, no game, nothing. And then we're, we're to evaluate our, you know, our situation and then see what next steps are. Um, you know, it's, it's basketball with masks and there's a lot of different rules and we're trying to get that. We are going to live stream our games. Um, when so, you know, we will, we'll do that through what's called huddle and we'll, we'll put that out there. I know that in the football world, a lot of people understand what I'm talking about. But, um, our pod is going to live stream and share that live stream with each other. So parents can either home or awake and can watch the games. So as of right now, we're a go, we're green, we're green, we're, we're moving forward. But again, like anything, it can, it can change.
Great. Thank you. And thank you for that update on the time on learning. Um, and, and please correct me if what I'm going to say is wrong, but, uh, the, the board of Ed had gotten together, I believe it was last month and then maybe earlier this week or last week to, to vote on changes because they've now come up with specific targets for districts to meet with time on learning. Whereas before it was kind of nebulous, but then now they came down with specific numbers of, that you have to meet. So, um, it, that would have, would have kudos to everybody for the fact that we hit those numbers and we had, didn't need to change anything to do so. So that's great news.
Yeah, it's live, they, they want live instruction. And so over a two-week period of time, K through 12, you had to average at least 35 hours of live instruction. And a lot of districts are having difficulty doing that. I mean, again, the thanks really transcends the entire district technology. Of course our staff, our students, our parent, I mean, it, this was, it, this is a, a team effort in order to, um, maintain this and to actually, and, and to actually hit 35 hours, which we weren't sure at first. Um, but we, uh, we, again, the state has told us we are cleared, um, at this point and will, there are more, we know that there are more stipulations to come.
Great. Thank you. Um, any other questions or comments, um, about our COVID related items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Um, last we met at our last regular meeting, which was in November, um, in the correspondent section, we had spoken about, um, a letter that the Phillipston reps, which would have been myself, Mrs. Chardier and Mr. Marks had received from the select board in Phillipston to kind of talk about, um, the turnover of the PMS building. Um, coming out of that building with, uh, meeting, which was very good. Um, we left it that they really needed to have a more in-depth discussion with Dr. Kazavant in order to actually put the pieces in place. And I know that took place right before Thanksgiving. So I'm going to turn it over to you if you just want to give a quick update on where we are and, um, and I don't think we're ready to take a vote on anything yet. Cause, but, um, but give us the update and then we can go from there.
Uh, thank you, madam chair. So, uh, literally the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, um, I attended a virtual meeting with the board of selectmen and in essence discussed, um, as I said before, um, kind of the parameters of the PMS building. Um, we crafted a document, which I know that I, I sent, or sent out, um, in terms of what we wanted to, uh, see in that, um, that agreement. And I, I have yet to hear back. So what I'm hopeful is that I believe tonight is a school committee, I mean, pardon me, a, um, a select board meeting, I believe. I don't, I don't know. So I, I would hope that by, you know, by now that I'll, I'll receive some type of feedback. Um, I, I don't want to go too far into January, quite frankly. Um, because we are still, we're, well, as of right now, we, we, we currently are maintaining the building. So, um, I guess there's more to come on that. And I would, I would expect that after, you know, after tonight's select board meeting, that something will, um, will come my way. But I, we will reach out just to see what the status is on that.
Great. Thank you. And, uh, we'll be on the lookout of, you know, for that feedback once you receive it. So, um, we will move forward when we are ready. I would just like to say hello to, to Mrs. Parker from the NDEA. We did move past your agenda item, but actually we're at a good point now. Um, because we were going to school committee comments. If you had any, um, comments from the NDEA, we can do that now.
Perfect. Sorry I'm late. Um, just the one thing I want to share is that now, um, all buildings are live streaming. Um, all of their classroom, all of the classes, um, right down to kindergarten and, and up. Um, and it seems to be going really well. I think that the fear was a lot bigger than, you know, the actual process itself and people are taking it slow and, and working out the kinks as they go. Technology issues have arrived, you know, have been arising from here and there. But we have Percy at TES and he's just amazing. Somebody sends him a help desk and next, you know, you see him running down the hall. Um, I think we should put in the budget to get him a scooter because he's all over the place. Um, but everything seems to be going very well and now teachers are preparing for tomorrow and doing some remote teaching for their first storm of the year.
Excellent. Thank you for that update. Um, it's, it's good to hear. I know, um, so many things that are new that have been thrown at so many people, uh, you know, everywhere. Um, it's sometimes hard to, to get your hands around it before it happens. So it's good news that they're really embracing this, the live streaming all the way down. And I'm sure the kids are appreciating more contact. So that's, that's awesome. So great. Thank you for that update. Um, welcome. Any school committee comments? Seeing none, um.
I have one.
Yes, go ahead, Mrs. Kozel.
I just have a question, bringing up the nurses. How is it going with both nurses being in, in the high school and not having a nurse in the middle school?
I get, for me, uh, so I, um, so I think it's, well, it's worked well because I, first off, they, they need, how, how to answer this? I, I think that it's worked out fantastic, given what the job is now. When we discussed this first, COVID wasn't even on the table. We weren't even, right? We're worried about, oh, what happens if someone at lunch? And it, we were, we were really talking about very normal, typical things that happened during what used to be normal school days. Um, right now, um, I'm not sure, given all that is, that needs to happen. And quite frankly, our number of students are reduced, right? Because we have, we're either, we're a cohort model. A lot of the kids have, or the parents have opted to maybe full remote or whatever the, whatever the case may be. So, um, the sheer numbers are not there, um, that we were concerned about. So I, I, you know, we have a much less, we have far fewer students than we normally would have. But the responsibilities have, have changed, you know, of course tenfold. And, um, I'm glad that they're, I think they would both say thankfully they're together a lot because there's a lot of different things that need to happen now in terms of case tracing or just PPE, helping out with PPE. And, um, so as of right now, it's, after speaking with Mariah almost 20 times a day, our nurse leader, um, it's, it seems that there, it's good that they're, they're together in both buildings.
Thank you.
Um, my only comment, and I don't know if you were going to bring this up under your superintendent report, but since, um, Mrs. Parker happened to mention the snow day impending tomorrow, um, perhaps Dr. Kazavant, um, would like to, um, just kind of outline what we're doing so that it's out there for the public via our meeting because we have put out a lot of communication so far. But I'll give you the opportunity. I don't want to steal the thunder from your superintendent report, but.
Well, it's fine because I just, I can just scratch it right off. That's okay. And actually Lisa had already stole the live streaming piece, so I don't have much. But, um, in terms of the snow day, one of the things that we talked about, again, I'm going to go back, is that one of the caveats, the 170-day student learning day was that they are student learning year, um, is that the, the commissioner allowed that this year we could do live streaming during snow days. Um, because in my letter to, or my email to staff and my, then my letter to the community, much of this has to do with how late in the year we're going to go. Um, we started almost three weeks later than we normally would have. When we started in September 14th or 15th, we, we were planning to start, you know, uh, the last week of August. So in central Mass, give or take, right? But in central Mass, that's, that's problematic because if you get five to seven snow days, which we've been averaging over the last couple anyway, um, that puts you that last week of June. Um, and so one of the things was that we could go remote. So locally, in terms of the districts around us, we all decided to, um, we decided to try this out. So we're all, we're all, uh, we're all full remote for our snow day. Cause we share parents and staff, right? So I might have staff that live in Gardner, Gardner has staff that live there. We have parents in common, kids. So districts, you know, we're, we're going to give this a shot. Um, we, we've put it out there and we, hopefully we explained it well enough to say that. One, if you log on and, or you can't log on because of power or a, a connectivity issue, don't worry about it. Just, just get on when you can. If you can get on and your teacher's not there, don't worry about it. Um, maybe they're having some issues, but just check back. And ultimately, you know, if we have a power outage and we have, you know, we have no internet and there's no power, no one locally, then don't worry about it and just go out and shovel, uh, for your parents is what I said. And/or build a snowman. All this snow will not be conducive to snowmen. Uh, but go out there and shovel. Uh, and we're just, it, it's going to be okay, right? So let's just, let's see how it goes. We're going to then meet and talk about it. Will that, will, will we do this every snow day? I don't think so, quite frankly. Um, and, but we're going to try it this one time to see how we collectively, how it works. And, and then talk to staff about it and, and see what they thought and parents, et cetera. So we'll go from there. So that's, that's really the update at this point in time. And, um, hopefully it works out.
Great. Thank you. And, um, and I did just want to pass along the comment that one of the benefits, I think for this evening's meeting is with the snowstorm coming, we probably would have rushed to get a meeting in and done, or maybe even postponed this. So one of the benefits of technology, um, with us being in our Brady Bunch squares here. So, um, any other comments from the school committee? Anybody have anything they want to say? Um, I'll just end with just a comment that, you know, I hope everybody has a wonderful vacation and, um, you know, has time, sorry. It's my dog. Sorry about that. That's why I usually do this from work. Um, I just want to let everyone know that, um, you know, we appreciate all the hard work. And we hope that everybody has the opportunity to get a little bit of downtime. Um, and, and. we hope that everybody has the opportunity to get a little bit of downtime and recharge over the break, and enjoys the holidays with whoever they're able to enjoy them with. So, okay. So, next up, we have some surplus items. To avoid having me read all of the quantities and ISBN numbers and whatnot, Mrs. Barney is going to screen share the list, if we can figure out how to...
Yes. Hold on one second.
...comes up. What I'll just do is I'm going to read through the list of the titles, and we'll show the quantity in ISBN on the screen. So when I'm done, I would entertain a motion to move to surplus these items. We're seeking approval to dispose of the following damaged curriculum books from the high school that are surplus. So the following books include The Bean Trees, The Odyssey by Robert Fitzgerald, The Odyssey Robert Fitzgerald Vintage, The Odyssey Signet Classic, WHD Rouse, The Odyssey Signet Classic, WHD Rouse, The Odyssey WHD, The Odyssey Hardcover WHD Rouse, and The Pearl by John Steinbeck of Mice and Men. I Am the Cheese by Robert Cormier, The Phantom of the Opera by Gaston LaRue, Frankenstein by Mary Shelley, there's multiple editions of that. Adventures of Huckleberry Finn by Mark Twain, there's a couple additions of that. Lord of the Flies by William Golding, The Pig Man, Paul Zindel, and Gulliver's Travels and Other Writings by Jonathan Swift. I would entertain a motion to surplus those items as requested.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Marks. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Who I, to be honest...
Mr. Mason.
Mr. Mason, geez, thank you. Shouldn't have been too hard to figure that out. I apologize. Any questions or comments about this list, other than the fact that I think some of them were issued to me when I was in school?
That was going to be my comment.
You too?
The age of them is unbelievable.
Yes. Seeing no other questions or comments, we'll do a roll call, though. Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Mattson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robichaud?
Yes.
Mrs. Chardier?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Aye.
And Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes, so that was unanimous, that those items will be surplussed. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and going through those books. As I said, you'll probably find some butles from some of us in them. Other items not reasonably anticipated by the chair, we have an item, it's not really an agenda item, but I did want to bring up the point that the winter gift drive is up and running, and we are working to support NRSD families in need of gifts this holiday season. And this is coming from the high school. Wish lists have been collected from students, and they've distributed a number of lists to the local churches and community members, but we still have a number of student wishes left. If you're interested in selecting a wish list and purchasing gifts for a student, please contact the high school guidance office at 939-2020, or the vice principal, Janet Brown, 939-5388. I do know there's also a flyer for this out on Facebook, so if you've missed those numbers, you can go to Facebook, the district's page, and find it if you scroll down, or just call the high school main office or the central office to find the numbers they're taking. I believe they can take donations via our Unibank or online payment system. Is that correct? I'm going to look to Mrs. Geister, maybe?
Yes.
Yes. So if anyone is interested in making a contribution to help support this, the winter gift drive, you can go online, somewhere there's information. I think that Facebook post has it, plus I'm sure you can find it somewhere else. Go ahead and contribute to that. So I do want to send out my personal thanks to the folks at the high school for coordinating that and making that happen. It's a very nice initiative and worthy of our attention. So thank you.
Can I just add quickly?
Sure.
I just wanted to extend, you know, kudos to both the high school, middle school, and the elementary school. Mrs. Bashan down at elementary has been working together with the other assistant principals and the counselors and the guidance department, and they have really done a lot of work on this and an amazing job. So I just wanted to give a shout out of thank you to them.
Great. Thank you for pointing that out. I wasn't sure exactly who the group extended to, so it's good to know. We appreciate their efforts. One other item I am going to bring up, because it just made me think of it, is we also have normally done our classroom food drives that kick off right around Thanksgiving, and we put holiday food baskets together. We work with the Templeton Food Pantry. This year, we didn't do that, but there was some monies that had been raised over the past, geez, I don't even know how many years. It's been a long time that the district has done this. And I know Mr. Prodzak in Food Services has worked with picking up a whole bunch of items to put into those baskets, and I believe it might have been today or tomorrow, he's, well, hopefully not tomorrow, delivering a whole bunch of food products so that we can fill and help the Templeton Food Pantry fill their food baskets for the local communities. And I wanted to send out a huge thanks on that. Go ahead, Kate.
I'm sorry. That reminded me that what's happening is, some people are actually getting a gift from the list and going out and purchasing it and delivering it, and some people are contributing money to the Unipay, is it? Unibank link? And what has been arranged is that if all of the gift, all of the wish list gifts from the families that have been identified have been purchased, the additional funds will go to the food bank.
No. Oops. Nobody's buzzing. Very good to know. So that's great, that any of the additional monies will then go to the food bank as well. So, good. And, you know, so again, you know, heartfelt thanks to everybody involved in all those initiatives and reaching out to not just our students, but to the community at large, which is wonderful. I did just want to read a couple of comments off of our YouTube feed. Christine Bennett says, Gulliver's Travels caught her attention, because she recently watched the movie version. She said, save her one of those copies, and she'll make a small donation for it. So, thank you, Christine. We'll see if we can make that work. I don't know from the process of what we have to do, but we'll see if we can get a copy in your hands. And we just had a nice note from Mike Curry, who is on the Select Board in Templeton. Just Merry Christmas to the school committee, teachers, and staff. It's been a tough year for learning, and I'm a family who's very much appreciative of the efforts and the ingenuity. So thank you, Mr. Curry, for those comments. And I think that we, the school committee, certainly mirror those thoughts when it comes to extending that out to the administration and the staff. So thank you for the comments. All right. Next up, we will go to the superintendent report. So we had a few things for Dr. Kazavant to talk about, as usual. We'll have staffing update, enrollment school choice, a brief update on the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee, and then whatever other information he needs to share with us. So I will turn it over for the next few minutes or however long to Dr. Kazavant.
I'll start off with the business side of things. So I want to just talk about the enrollment. Thank you, Madam Chair. We've, again, the school choice, we keep talking about the school choice preliminary report in a couple different venues here in conversation. It's an important report, because it certainly affects our bottom line, but it's really the only way we know who is in and who is coming, who's gone, in terms of school choice. And that helps us really solidify, you know, who is here and how, if for no other reason. So as of right now, and again, we take a snapshot, quite frankly, on October 1st, and we really, we just really utilize that as our go-to. And, you know, we're at a district total of 1,357. You know, again, as I look at these numbers, in terms of residents, and again, without going into it too deeply at this point in time, but, you know, the residents have gone down, although we know that close to 100, if not a little over 100, folks are school choice. And they do not show on our rolls, because you literally, you literally unenroll from the school district when you school choice. I mean, I said school choice, pardon me, homeschool, my fault. Okay? So, you know, that's a, again, we're going to have, we'll see how, you know, COVID affects those numbers as we move forward, but, you know, as of right now, we're about where we were last year, give or take. We believe when we started thinking about how many kids have pulled, have been pulled and gone to homeschool. So as of right now, that's where we sit in terms of a number. We'll really have a, we'll have a very good picture, again, within a week or so, once the preliminary report comes out from DESI. So I've already, I've talked about school choice a little bit. We'll know more going forward. Our staffing update, we really don't have much more to discuss, more than staffing. We do have a few openings in terms of paraprofessionals, but for the most part, we are holding steady, as we did at the beginning of the school year. As you know, we do have a patchwork of coverage in a lot of, not a lot, but in many areas, regardless. There's a lot of different reasons, whether it be ADA accommodations, et cetera, or because we need more, we need more people, sometimes with less, with less kids, which I realize is sometimes hard, but we've managed that pretty well since the very beginning, and the grants, and of course, we've talked about FEMA, MIMAs, Templeton, have helped out greatly. So as of right now, we are, you know, we're status quo. That's okay. Right now, that's exactly what we want to be. Sorry.
Did you want to talk about the director of technology position?
Yes. So the one addition slash, you know, loss, quite frankly, is that we are, we have posted, and we are in the throes of hiring or going through the process of hiring a new technology director. Mike Wakefield, who has been here 24 years, and I always look to Anne Marie, because I seem to get that number wrong a lot, but I believe it's 24 years, as the tech director, has decided selfishly to retire. Quite frankly, it's very selfish of him, but that's what he chooses to do. Now, we, of course, we wish, Mike has been fantastic, and a big reason why we have done so well in this environment. But he will officially retire the last day of March. So the idea is to select a candidate and hopefully have that candidate work with Mike for whatever period of time, to become as acclimated as you can when taking over for someone who's been here for 24 years. And, but we are in the middle of that, and we actually, I believe it's Tuesday, we have semifinalist interviews, I believe. So, okay. So with that, and we've already talked about the snow day enough, I believe, first, I mean, we've really covered that. So Lisa talked about live streaming, and so there may be folks, quite frankly, who are like, well, you know, been live streaming at the middle in high school since the beginning. I think, and I've said it before, we are a victim of our own success at times. I think our staff make these very difficult and almost impossible situations look easy, truthfully. Our administrative staff, our building principals, it's a lot of hard work. Lisa coined it right. They, it's hard to let go with what you know, what works, and they have done an excellent job stepping up. And I know for a fact that although we're just looking to do one or two, I know that they've jumped in this both feet, and they are doing a lot more live streaming than, when I say required, but what was really the plan. Technology has been fantastic. I know that Lisa talked about Percy. He is wonderful in every single way. And we, you know, they have, they've crushed it. We're very lucky to have the people we have. They have done a lot in a very little amount of time, and have been very responsive to our needs. So, you know, my superintendent's report is that, you know, that we just have a very, we have an excellent teaching staff, we have an excellent support staff, our administrators are outstanding, and it's really what's keeping the wheels on this, you know, this bus right now, quite frankly. And I couldn't be happier or prouder, you know, to be the superintendent, because it's hard work. This is the hardest I've ever seen anybody, anybody work in terms of this. So I think that that's the most important part of my school, of my superintendent's report, Madam Chair, unless you have any questions. But they're doing a fantastic job, and I really am very, very pleased with the success and support.
That's great. It's good to hear that they're just adopting all this new technology and new instructional practices. That's great news. Did you have an update on the Regional Agreement Amendment Committee? Because I know they did meet.
Yep. Briefly, we had our introductory meeting, really, and we, Mr. Jeff Marks is the chair. Ms. Bowmild from Templeton is the vice chair. And we really just, we set, when I say set the ground rules, we really just went over the how things will work moving forward. We set dates. It was an excellent meeting, very informative. And we have another one, I believe, the end of January. I think that's when we'll start getting into the, you know, into the finer points. But, you know, with only one meeting behind us, I think that, you know, everything is A-OK. So hopefully, that continues.
Great, thank you. It's good that we got that kicked off, and thank you to Jeff for stepping up to chair the group and, you know, and lead that charge. So we'll be looking for more information as it becomes available. Appreciate that. Just one other item, I did want to let you know, Dr. Kazavant, that it has been requested that you ensure that your snow day videos continue, and that just because we don't typically have what we're calling a snow day anymore, doesn't mean that you are relieved of those responsibilities of entertaining all of us. So please be sure to think of something for tomorrow.
I, we have, we have some ideas. I will tell you that a wonderful third grader asked who I was, and I told her, and she said, oh, you're the guy that can't sing. So it hurt a little. It hurt a little, but I'm not, I'm undeterred, Madam Chair. So I promised that I was going to work harder at singing, and so please be on the lookout for any other opportunities for me to improve my stage presence and my singing.
Perhaps a poetry slam might be your next attempt, which hopefully won't be out of tune that way. Thank you. And thank you for being a good sport about that, too. I know there's a whole group of you superintendents that do post things, and there's some really great videos and communications, and it really helps, you know, just keep the levity around some times that can be a little, little hard to bear. So, thank you. All right. Next up, we have, let me, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, any questions for Dr. Kazavant from the school committee? I don't see anybody. So we'll move on. Kate, you were going to give us a curriculum instruction update, and I believe it has to do with some of the assessments that we had, and I believe you probably want to share your screen, so I will turn it over to you.
I'm just getting it in the right spot. Okay, my computer's been slow, but that was really slow. Okay. So I put together some data for STAR reading and STAR math, and I put some information at the top, just for your, for you, your understanding. So these reports are the percentage of students at benchmark for reading and at benchmark for math at the beginning of year. So these were administered, you know, a month or more ago, and what they are really telling us is, at that stage of the year, are students on track to meet end-of-year expectations? And STAR is tailored to Massachusetts, the STAR that we have purchased, so our benchmarks are related to Massachusetts standards. I included, just for your information, because I know there's a lot of former educators on the committee, as well as people, you know, really interested in the detail of these reports. So STAR reading includes this set of skills, and STAR early literacy... So STAR reading includes this set of skills um and STAR early literacy includes this set of skills in addition to some early numeracy, but it's not really enough math in that early literacy to really gauge math. So the first report we ran was percentage of, I'm going to put two reports at the at the same time here. This top one is percentage of students at or above benchmark at the beginning of year. And the 80% bar is there because in an intervention system, what we're really looking for is that 80% of our students are meeting expectations um through classroom instruction. And then 15 to 20% of students get additional support through interventions. And as you know, we have interventionists in the elementary school in particular um working with that population. Clearly, we expected this in this data to be lower than we desired because of um going out on COVID and really the most important thing that I emphasize when we look at this is it's not about really what it tells us, it's about what we do about what it tells us, right? So what are we putting in place to make sure that um we're catching those kids up? So I was very curious to see, you know, if I included the kids who were nearly at benchmark, what did that do? And you can see when you look at that, that it really significantly um raises the bar, no pun intended, um for those students. And lots of students are really at that approaching that 80% benchmark. Make a note in your mind here that this first one is really kindergarten. I, for some reason, the graph wouldn't print with a letter and I just gave up. Um, so if we include those kids who are nearly at benchmark along with those kids who are at or above benchmark, we're in pretty good shape. There this, you know, does um call out our attention to some areas that we need to dive deeper and we've done multiple um meetings at our admin team around data and um we use a a protocol of just noticing what the data tells us, wondering what questions we have next, and then what additional information do we need to know to make action steps, to take action steps for correction? So um that's how we've been approaching it. I know that on the January 4th and 5th Professional Development Days, it's going to be a lot of time for teachers to do the planning that they need, but there will be some time at at some levels to um look at data as well. And teachers really do print reports off of STAR. Um, there are reports called instructional planning reports and the teachers use those to identify the skill deficits, you know, that um that they're seeing in their classroom and and kind of be able to target that those kids for specific skills. So um, you know, we want it, we want it to be a little bit better, but it's really not so bad when we look at it, um including these kids that are nearly. And of course, literacy, reading has been our big push at elementary. All subjects are important, but if you fall behind in your reading, and that's really why this all ties together with that student learning time report that we um thankfully were um on target with, because our focus has been, let's have the, you know, the most and best instructional time we can with kids. Um, and teachers have really stepped up to the plate with that and they're doing amazing work with that. So the second group is a similar pattern. It tells you a little bit about what um math skills are included in the benchmark. Um, this is the initial report that I put together, which was percentage of students at or above benchmark at the beginning of year in math. And then I again ran this report with the nearly at or above benchmark and you can see we're right on target with that. So couple areas to look at there, but overall um doing pretty well. And this is attached to your um agenda.
Kate, I had um two questions and one is going to be a little leading because we did discuss some of this um at our admin academic meeting. Um, obviously, there's a dip, I believe, in second grade and just so if you could maybe go into that just a little bit. Um, and then the second question I have is, um, when is our next assessment scheduled? I I believe you had indicated we would do three, but I I don't.
Yes.
If you could just talk a little bit about that so we can start comparing.
Absolutely. So um we have beginning, middle and end of year benchmarks. We can use STAR assessments for other things. We can do custom assessments, do assessments on a unit or a chapter and so forth, but this is particularly benchmark assessments, as I said, to kind of dipstick and say, where are kids right now and are they on track to meet expectations at their grade level? Um, so we do have a mid-year coming up that'll be the end of January to the first week of February. I think it's a two or a three week window we set, because it's K to 12 now, so we want people to have some flexibility, um principals, you know, with their teams and in um scheduling that. And then we have an end of year, which is end of May, probably first week of June, because you don't want to leave it too late, even though you want you want to get every ounce of learning you can out of them. Um, you have to, you know, gauge where the sweet spot is for kids to really still be taking it seriously. So we'll have a mid-year and I'll be able to report out to you probably after February vacation on what progress has been made in the in the grade levels. Um, the dip in second grade, you know, we're looking at, you know, what that entails, but we have to realize it's not second grade, right? It's K one, two, because those kids came into second grade having had two thirds of first grade and probably being at a pretty critical place in their reading skills and um and really we need to look at the specifics of what those skills we have. You know, the teams have have looked at that and they'll look even more closely um to fill those gaps. The other thing I should mention is I just um worked with um Ms. Geister today um to use some remaining Title I grant funds to run a summer program next year. When I say this is in its infancy, it's in like literally in the infancy stages, but um it's it's typical to have a summer program for students who are um at risk or not performing at grade level, maybe not necessarily students who are on A P s, but other students who have skill gaps. And so we plan to do that this summer um utilizing that money. And that'll, I mean, obviously, we want to get our students as far as we can by the end of the year, but then maybe give some students just a little bit, who are struggling more than most, a little leg up for the following year.
It's great. Um, any questions from the school committee?
Kate, I have a quick question. Does the included on watch uh students, does that include students or does the data that we're looking at include students who are already on I E Ps or getting additional help?
Sure. So we test every student. A benchmark is what's called a universal screener. So we assess every student. I mean, if you had a pullout program with significant students with significant um disabilities that couldn't participate, that would be the exception, but otherwise, it's pretty much 100% of students who participate. And I've said, I've used this analogy before, but it just really, I think, explains what a universal screener is. It's like taking your temperature. You know you have a temperature, so you know something's going on, but you don't know exactly what it is. So your doctor will do additional diagnostic testing to figure out, is it a strep throat? Is it a sinus infection? What is it? And that's what we do. We do a bit, we do a universal screener, which is the benchmark at beginning of year. And then we identify the kids in the in the, you know, lowest performing categories and we do um diagnostic assessments to figure out exactly what skills and so forth. So it does include 100% of students and some of those students are on I P s and they're already receiving additional services um for, you know, depending on what their grid says.
Awesome. Thank you, Kate.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any questions for Kate at this point? Nope, seeing none. Thank you for um reporting out on that. We look forward to um hearing back on this data, you know, at the end of February, when you're ready to to give us an update on where we are and and, you know, talk a little bit about what those diagnostics have been and and how successful we've been. Um, uh, because you're exactly right. If we we need to know there's a problem before we can start a treatment plan, we need to know what what we're treating, so.
Our students in T E S have been in intervention already, you know, obviously for reading. Those intervention groups are running, you know, everything is different than it was in the past because of, you know, COVID and our hybrid model and sometimes our remote model, but they are um they are our groups running.
Ms. Trifilo?
Yes, thank you. Um, the homeschool students, is there any accountability to these tests for students who are at home?
No, so homeschools by law, if you homeschool your child, it's as though you withdrew from the district. Um, students with disabilities have some special rules um around that, around our obligation to provide some services for them, but um for the vast majority of students, when you homeschool, they are now, it's like they transferred to, you know, Gardner or someplace.
And are students who are uh fully remote are taking these tests?
Yes, yep. So they took the tests as well. And so that's another thing that could skew the data, although the benchmarks are um norm referenced, right? So those are um calibrated with other kids across the country at the grade level at the same time and so forth. And Renaissance is very um rigorous in their statistical um process for all of that work. Um, but they have told us that they have not seen a big difference in taking the test remotely or taking it in person. You know, it's an open question. Um, you know, when a kid is in front of you, you know exactly they're on the computer and they're doing it and they're quiet and so forth. Um, when they're at home, we we have the tools securely where we can see their screens, but I don't think that was really um used at elementary in in the window that we um had these tests, because that was a new tool to us. So there is some question about those students who took it remotely and whether it was as accurate as it could be, but um it's better to do it than not to do it and have some data to look at it.
Yeah, it just poses the question of um the following year when they come in, how we uh pick it up and um improve those skills.
Yes, and we do have, we can look at um our students longitudinally. We're not quite there yet because this is a relatively new product to us, but we do have some data from last year that follows the students, so we can see if this is, you know, um usual for that student and so forth.
Very important. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions for Kate at this point? Nope, seeing none. Um, thanks again for the report and we will move on. Um, we have our subcommittee reports, um the academic administrative, um Mrs. Trifilo, I believe we've covered everything here, if that's correct?
That is correct.
Okay, um, finance, we've already spoken to. Um, and again, if anyone wants to do a deeper dive into the uh F Y twenty-two budget kickoff, you can look at our video from Monday's meeting. Um, facilities?
Um, Margaret, I'll just say that we are working with the uh the new um heating stuff that we have the company in there. We're working to set up another um meeting um just to go over some of that and some of the other things, but while we don't actually, we we haven't met, uh but we're working on getting that on the books.
Okay, thank you. Um, policy, I know that we deferred having our meeting this year so we can regroup and come back with a whole new head of steam in January. We've got, I think, just a maybe a couple dozen, if even that many policies that we just need to review for the um with our initial review, which has taken us um like six or seven years uh to work through, but we're getting there. So we'll meet in January and then hopefully have some report out in February. Um, long-term planning, again, we deferred the meeting of the Long-Term Planning Committee. That'll happen again in uh in January, so we'll report out after that. Um, diversity, equity, inclusion, I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Marks. I think you had a a screen you wanted to share.
I I do. Um, and actually, before I get into it, I I've spoken a couple of times, I do want to just apologize for the lack of video tonight. I'm on a new machine in a new location and the video resolution is poor, so uh that's why I'm not on video today. Okay?
Yeah.
So with the diversity, equity, inclusion, um so what we've been working on, um, we've been working with Mr. Young uh for some student involvement, okay, to get some students involved in the uh subcommittee. Um, um, he's got us uh several students that are interested uh to participate with us. The goal here would be to include the students so that we can gain a better understanding from their own perspective of the challenges and adversity um that the students in our school are facing. Um, so it falls on these students, um, would also allow them to take the discussions uh back to the student body. That's that's what our hope would be, okay? Uh, Mr. Young, again, he already has a list of people that are in mind and we hope to include them in our discussions um for uh for next month's meeting. Um, okay? The other thing that we have been working on, and again, I will do a sheer screen in a second, is the um N R S D mascot, okay? Uh, that is really the big thing. Um, and I am bringing that up tonight uh partially because of the previous agenda item about the students coming onboard. Um, so based on our discussions, here, let me share the screen just so you know what I'm talking about here. Uh. All right, is that that's up now, right? Yes, it is. Correct? You can see that?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, so based on the research that we've been doing, um our discussions in the meetings and what's been happening in many of the communities throughout the state, uh the committee would like to recommend uh that the district remove um all the Native American imagery from any and all the assets, equipment and gear that we have throughout the district. Um, and again, this is real of the imagery. Um, I will give it what what we are talking about is not significantly changing it. We would just uh suggest that we move ju- remove just the arrowhead there. Um, uh however, uh at this time, we believe that the name Warriors will remain. Uh, we have no no intention of changing that at this time, okay? Um, also, uh due to the the high cost associated with these changes, we feel that it would be best to roll these out over a period of time, uh such as like the end of life cycle uh for any of the assets that we had. Similar uh being the, let me just go through some of them, would be the gym floor, because we have it here, uh the uniforms and um any of the gear that um um faculty and staff wear. Um, the website, um, it's still on the website. So we have a lot of things, podiums, things like that, backdrops and podiums. Um, um, so those are all the things that we would have to do, so it could be very expensive uh for us to do that. So again, what we're thinking about is at the uh the end of the life cycle, so such as the next time the gym floor needs to be refinished, um, we would, we would incorporate it into at that time. Next time we go to change uniforms, uh we would do it that, uh we would do it at that at that time, okay? We think that that would help to offset some of the challenges of making all the uh changes at once. So uh we were originally going to push this discussion off um until we were able to include some of the students because we want them to be involved in the decision. Um, but uh since we have students joining us next month, we thought it was appropriate um to bring it in front of the school committee and open the topic up for discussion uh prior to informing anybody else. So we just wanted to kind of throw it out there so you know what we're doing rather than getting students in there and finding out uh secondhand. Um, um, so one of the things that we are thinking about uh when we do get the students um involved would be possibly to host the competition uh so that they can present um ideas for um adjusting the uh the logo. Um, again, albeit this would, the new logo would not be a significant change, it would simply alter the spearhead. Um, uh, we're also thinking that we could use a slightly different component for each of the separate student groups, like sports teams and academic teams. You know, maybe we could do something there. So that's where we are and I don't know if there are any questions or comments. Um, that that's where we are right now.
Great. Anybody have any questions or comments for Jeff and and I know Vicky and Deborah Shott are the other two members on the committee at this point? I don't see anyone, Jeff. Um, thank you for giving us an update and, you know, we'll be sure to communicate because once you do want to move forward, we'll make sure that we have a a full agenda item for this discussion, you know, so that we can move forward and figure out, you know, what official actions we need to take uh to put whatever initiatives we need to to do in place. Um, but thank you for just kind of letting us know where you guys have been headed um so that we have an idea of what to expect and what's coming up.
Yeah, like I said, one of the concerns was we just didn't want to get it out there and have the committee find out secondhand, you know, um where were we going with this? So I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. All right. Um, okay, so we'll let you stop sharing your screen. Perfect. Perfect. And then the last subcommittee, the Templeton Elementary School Building Committee, I don't know if you've had a meeting or had to have any updates?
No, nothing new.
Okay, great. That's our subcommittee reports. There's been, there was no correspondence. I did just want to mention that our next school committee meeting, we have scheduled on January 11th at 5:00. This is going to be another finance meeting that will focus solely on the budget. We're going to post this. If something happens and we don't have any information that would make it worthwhile to meet, we will cancel and reschedule that meeting, but please put that in the books. A regular meeting for the month would be January 20th, which is the Wednesday, the 20th at 5:00. So that would be our next regular meeting. And unless anybody has anything else they'd like to say, I don't see anybody. We will be going into, Mrs. Trifilo, I see you, you just sort of get your eye, perfect, okay. Yep. We will be going into executive session this evening. We will not be coming out. We had initially thought we may be coming out into executive session, but we will not be coming out into executive session, so the public portion of the meeting will end once we take our vote. But we will be going into executive session for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the NDEA in UFCW. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. And again, the meeting will not return into open session immediately following. So I would entertain a motion to do so?
So will.
I have a motion from, I'll say, Mr. Marks. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second from Mrs. Trifilo. We will do roll call. Mr. Marks?
Yes.
Mrs. Matson?
Yes.
Mrs. Robashad?
Yes.
Mrs. Chardier?
Yes.
Mrs. Kojal?
Yes.
Mr. Mason?
Hi.
Mrs. Trifilo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes says yes. I'd like to thank once again Callie and Abby, our student reps, for joining us this evening and thank you, Mrs. Parker, for your update from the NDEA and thank you to everybody who's tuned in or will watch this later on. And then we wish everybody a happy and healthy next few weeks as we get through the holidays and we hope everyone stays safe, the school committee, and we'll now go into executive session. So good night to our public. Thank you.